Hey, hey, brother Steve from Hollywood, California. We are back once again with another great edition, another great edition of Coach Your Decision 2021. Meet the candidates. I'm so excited that you're here with me today to join me on this wonderful broadcast from Hollywood, California. Currently five minutes after the hour right here on our Coach Your Decision 2020 21 page. You can send us some comments right here. That's right, if you're out there watching and you know Lady Lolita Fluker, I want you to send us some comments right now. Let her know you're watching, let her know you're watching. Share this video, share this video right now. We are about to crank this thing up. Oh, oh, wait, wait, wait. I see that Illinois is trying to get the votes. All right, somebody made a comment already. So let's get those comments, let's get those notes up, let's get the people watching. They are commenting already. So let's crank this thing up. Tonight, the one lady Lolita Fluker, she's gonna talk about why she is qualified to be a member of the National Board of Trustees for the Church of God in Christ. And guess what? Sometimes during this interview, I just make it where a trip to Las Vegas or Hawaii like I did last night. Brother Steve from Hollywood, stay tuned. Okay, we are back. We are so excited by all the saints and friends that's joining us on our broadcast today. Lady Lolita Fluker is gonna tell us why she's the next qualified candidate for the trustee board of the Church of God in Christ. Want to make sure that you share this video during this broadcast. Send us your comments, yes, and your notes and say some wonderful encouraging words to Lady Lolita out there. Cause we're gonna post it right here live on our broadcast. Before we go, let's bring in her campaign manager, Mr. Pastor Bill, Elder Bill. We go way back. Doc, how you doing Doc? Welcome to our broadcast tonight.
Thank you, brother Steve. Man, it's good to be here with you. So good to see you, man. I miss you, man. We used to work together, we used to work close together. But I'm doing good, how you doing?
We sure did. I remember typing your email address. I said, he's already in my address book, but then, oh no, there's another email address. Doc, we're so glad to see you home tonight. You know, the people are commenting. Now, people are saying, well, I'm texting Coach to two four five eight seven. Keep texting, keep texting Coach because in about a week or so, I'm gonna release some special gifts. I think I'm gonna give away, uh, let me see, I've got to give away 200 UV sanitizers. I'm gonna give those away. I'm gonna give away 100, $300 gift certificate, gift cards for God to dining. And I'm gonna give out about 200 prescription cards, help make your prescriptions a little cheaper. And I'm gonna give away some trips to Vegas and Hawaii, New York, Chicago, Philadelphia, wherever you wanna go. We're just gonna bless you just to have a great time. Okay, so you may wanna text that Coach to two four five eight seven, make sure you know the list. Elder Bill, first of all, the people are commenting everywhere and we want all the members of all nations coaching. Yes, we calling you out right now. Okay, you talking about, oh, my first lady anniversary time, you be sitting up there at the church, sitting there. Well, you ain't sitting there now. Hold on, somebody called me a few minutes ago, let me sanitize my phone. We'll be, oh, let me sanitize my phone. Somebody called me earlier today, I said, hold on, let me sanitize the phone. We ain't got time to talk to you, you be something during church at the pastor's appreciation. I'm like, I love my first lady. While you love her, comment right now. Put your name in the comments and you can also cash out for two. But put your name in the comments, let her know you're here and going to Ohio. Dr. Lanell Perry says hello, she's running for judiciary board as well. Peace and blessings, Lady Fluker, we love you, all nations. There you go. We're proud of you, Illinois, Illinois, I know Illinois well, all right. Great, I know California well. All right, peace and blessings, good evening, we love you. All right, there we go. They are commenting, commenting. Your James T. Watson District, First jurisdiction, Illinois, remember? All right, Illinois is coming through, Illinois, where you at? Come on, some of y'all on the Dan Ryan, right now you think I know that freeway? You on the Dan Ryan right now? Get off the freeway, pull off to the side and comment and you shouldn't be walking while you driving in the first place. Elder Bill, let's talk about your wonderful, you're the campaign manager. Let's let you introduce her and let the people know who we have on our broadcast on tonight.
Man, I am excited, man. This is, this is exciting because I really love the Church of God in Christ. Because I love the Church of God in Christ, I really believe we need to have our best and most gifted, intelligent minds at the top of our church to wave us into this new, this new normal that we're marching into. And I really believe that Lady Lolita Fluker is that voice we need at the table. I really encourage everybody to support because a vote for Lolita is a vote for the change we need. I'm talking about a proven leader, one who has business acumen, one who's a strategic thinker, one who has a solid and firm foot on our foundation, but is always reaching in the new directions and in his alignment with the newness that God is trying to work in our church. She is brilliant, she is a corporate woman, she's a spiritual woman, a praying woman. I watched her go from step to step. I mean, God has really moved her from glory to glory. And I really believe that this is a God move and that this is a, this is the change that we need for the church.
Well, let's do nothing else but now, but bring her in. Ladies and gentlemen, saints and friends, you all know her. If you don't, today you will. The one lady Lolita Fluker, how you doing, Lady Lolita?
Hello, brother Steve, I am great, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. We gonna let Pastor Bill take a break in our green room right now. But we wanna welcome you to our broadcast right now. And this is your time, this is your platform to express to the world your concerns and your platform as a candidate for the Church of God in Christ trustee board. Amen. Pastor Bill, we'll be right back with you in just a moment. Lady Fluker, share us your platform that you're running on to be a member of the trustee board of the Church of God in Christ.
Certainly, brother Steve, I am excited. Thank you so much for having me on your show on tonight. Uh, we have been eagerly anticipating this and this time. And now that it is here, I would like to share my platform for running for the National Board of Trustees for the Church of God in Christ. First of all, I am the change that we need. Uh, my commitment to safeguard the organization's assets, the properties and the finances. Do it with integrity, always exemplifying ethical behavior. That is what I'm running on. I believe that this is the time for this administration to have someone like me as the change that we need to represent the National Board of Trustees for our great church.
You know, let me ask you one simple question. People wanna know what makes you qualify? Now, I know your qualifications, but I want you to share what makes you qualify to be on the national trustee board?
What makes me qualify, brother Steve, is I have 20 years of experience working for two Fortune 500 companies that are publicly traded. I have a record of success in revenue growth year over year. I have exceeded business plans administered by the region vice president up to the CEO of the corporation. I've been able to exceed whatever goals those were that were given to me. I've led my team as late as 2019 to a successful 20% year over year improvement, which is $23 million in revenue gained year over year. That is just in ancillary sales alone annually, that was $229 million, which was number one in all of North America. My region was responsible for that. I was able to lead my team to record breaking numbers. I am qualified, I have received numerous accommodations that have led to multiple promotions to forge relationships with senior executives that have my ability to use KPIs, um, key performance indicators, um, to exceed target objectives that were given to me and being able to exceed those goals. I am qualified because I am a skilled businesswoman. I, I have worked for two major companies as I've already stated. Also, Christian Couples Finances is what's something that I've launched out of my passion for finances. Um, because I have such a passion for finances, um, I certainly wanna help the body of Christ. Um, and so that what's make me qualified to be a candidate and to sit on the National Board of Trustees.
You know, let me ask you this question. Tell us about, uh, your local church, the church that you attend, your pastor and things of that nature. But then, uh, before we do that, let's get some comments in. People are commenting, uh, giving you congratulations. Oh, right, Lady Lolita is the real deal. Uh, Derek Lewis says, God bless you from Texas. We love you, Lady Fluker. Uh, she's anointed, she's, uh, to make everything better. Jasmine Peyton, Jasmine out there, I'm sure. Now, I know Jasmine, FJI on the mat. Now, I know she gonna get you some bling bling. So Jasmine, start putting it together, Jasmine gonna make something good. The change we need, the saints are just, they're commenting, Team Fluker, God bless you. Let me ask you this particular question. Um, at this point right now, tell us about your local church. And then also, uh, let's talk about what do you bring to the board now? If elected to the trustee board, what contribution would you bring that they can say, Lady Lolita brought that to the board?
Well, what I would bring to the National Board of Trustees, brother Steve, I am a trained and equipped, um, to lead organizations. And because of that, I have a bachelor's degree in business administration. I have a master's degree, an MBA with a concentration in finance. What I bring to the table is my ability to, I'm an influencer. I've been able to forge relationships with senior executives. Um, I didn't have the multiple layers of people that I had to get through to get to the top person. And so being that influencer and having those relationships, I intend to bring the same thing to the National Board of Trustees to help our church. Um, for instance, I will tell you, um, in my tenure, I, I implemented a program to grow revenue. And this program was considered for the bypassers. Uh, this was at Hertz Corporation for customers that never stopped by the counter. And we wanted to gain additional revenue from these people, which happened to be our elite customers. Well, a program that I was instrumental in rolling out, uh, gave us significant revenue gain by customers that ordinarily would not have stopped by the counter. We would have missed that revenue. I intend to bring some innovative ideas, my creativity, um, to the National Board of Trustees. I believe that you have to have someone in place that has the ability to go into a boardroom and to be able to speak the language to make things happen. Uh, the American way, brother Steve, we use the philosophy, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Right.
Well, I believe in the Chinese philosophy. There's always a way to make it better. We can constantly improve. And so a fresh set of eyes, you know, new ideas, just like when you're in school. If you have not been in school for quite some time, uh, maybe Excel and spreadsheets were not very popular when you were in school. But now you don't do anything, everything now you're doing, um, through some type of spreadsheet. You have systems like Tableau software to enable you to analyze data, to set goals and using all of this comprehensive data analysis in order to ensure that our great church move forward. Uh, we want to be the world-class organization. You, I'm the change that's needed to help our organization move from the now to the future, which is where we headed with this new administration. Um, I just believe someone, um, like myself with a skill set in business to be able to talk to the powers that be, to ensure that the, the parishioners' money, every dollar is used appropriately and not mishandled. You have to have someone that's skilled, have the eye to be able to look at blind items, to know what is necessary and to know what is not so necessary. I just believe that, um, we have to be good stewards over everything that the Lord have blessed us with and the congregants, the finances of our great church, they are to be protected. I'm going to bring a skill set coupled along with other team players collectively. You know, having that, being united makes us even stronger. We are better, literally, we are better together. Um, I use it with my current teams. You know, someone is great with PowerPoint presentations and putting it together. Somebody else know how to do the, the spreadsheets. We put all of that together and we're successful together. I bring new energy, I bring a level of enthusiasm. I, I bring the ability to be able to use skilled business acumen and using that knowledge to actually be a help to our wonderful church.
You know, that's a lot of information and you know, you are very powerful, strong businesswoman in the things that you do. Wanna say hello to our YouTube, uh, viewers out there. We're gonna keep this, uh, video on our YouTube channel for the next five to seven months so that people can consistently see information and learn more things about you out there as well. And we wanna welcome all of our YouTube viewers. Thank you so very much. This week, we are celebrating 1 million views on our YouTube channel and we're very, very, very grateful for that as well. Share this video on our YouTube channel. Tell us about your local church and the things you do locally and the things that you do with your jurisdiction.
Uh, awesome, I'd love to share. So I am the first lady of the All Nations Church of God in Christ, where my wonderful husband, Pastor Andre Fluker, is our pastor. And I serve as the women's department coordinator. Um, I also am on the finance team at our local church. Um, my, my hands are in so many things. Uh, we, we have a wonderful church. Um, we have a very supportive ministry that is, uh, moving forward. Um, I have served being a third generation collegiate kid. I grew up in this church and so I'm not a stranger to all of the nuances that go along with being a part of this great church. Uh, my parents, uh, my, my mother, um, an evangelist, a first lady, my father, a pastor in this great church. And, um, after his passing, my mother went on to pastor the church, yes, a woman. Pastor in the Church of God in Christ. Uh, she was my pastor at first and, um, I, I headed her finance team. Um, she, she wanted me over that because she knew my strength. And we were able to do major renovations, uh, being at the, the Great House of Refuge Church of God in Christ, um, due through our skill set of, of managing finances. Um, and then of course, um, myself being a district chair lady, uh, a state field representative in the Church of God in Christ. And the roots go deep. My, my husband himself, uh, comes from, um, his family, uh, nationally known in the Church of God in Christ. In fact, his father, my father-in-law, the late, uh, great Dr. Samuel Fluker, was the chaplain of the General Assembly of the Church of God in Christ. Yes, and he worked very heavily, uh, with Bishop Williams in the Sunday School Department as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, it just, it goes together. Uh, so we're collegiate babies. We are, uh, dedicated and committed to this great church and we have a love that goes deep. And we certainly want to be a help to the church that we've been a part of all of our lives. Have never been outside of the church, have always been in, have watched changes and the changes that come. Uh, not always bad, changes are good. They're good. And I just believe that the Lord is raising up people in this hour to continue to lead full speed ahead.
Wow, you know, that's, you know, a lot of people are not, you know, it's, it's amazing. Some people are running for, uh, different things and not just for this campaign, but I'm talking about different things in the church. And you know, you, you're not active locally with your local church. They don't even, they don't even know you in the jurisdiction. So it's good that you're active, you've done things, you understand the heart of the church, you understand the heart of the people. Uh, before we ask you this next question, I just wanna get a couple of comments in. Uh, well, to one only my mom, first lady, or hairs of my dead, that's my parents, they out there watching. From Cleveland, Ohio, all nations is out there watching right now. ANC is the best, ANC rocks. Amen, the people love you, first lady. I see that they're watching, your numbers are going higher. A great job reaching out and bringing the millennial generation encouraging to, mentioning to the broken. Yes, she is qualified, go first lady. The people are just commenting and they're just welcoming you on this live broadcast. Please, God bless you, brother Curtis Williams as well. Uh, Fluker 2021, the saints are commenting and they're supporting you all day long. We need you to share this video and share this video. First of all, let me say thank you, um, for those out there who were a, uh, who have sold into our ministry here as well. If you'd like to do so, I, I thank God for you. Somebody sold a $20 gift yesterday into our ministry. And I was like, well, thank you very much. And I gave them a trip to Las Vegas or Hawaii for four days. So thank you for everybody, for those of you who sold into our ministry on today, whatever, we thank you so very much. And, uh, if you do so into our ministry today, it may be one person or two people. If you do so, then make sure you include your email address and we're gonna bless you 100-fold. So all I, that's all I got to say on that. We will be a nice blessing to you 100-fold. Let me ask you this question before we leave our broadcast. Um, where do you see the future of our church post-COVID? Where do you see the future of our church?
The future of our church post-COVID, uh, that, that seems to be a question that continues to come up. Didn't know COVID was coming and certainly did not realize the impact of COVID would be as significant as it is right now and numbers still going. Post-COVID, I believe that our church will not return to the normalcy that we once had. I believe that, uh, and not all things are bad. I think what we found out through COVID is some things that we no longer have to do.
That's right.
You know, I think we've identified now that, uh, for instance, I, I used to travel and travel from place to place all over Florida for different, uh, areas that, that rolled up to me. And now we do a lot more things, you can do things now via Zoom.
Right.
All kind of platforms, Google meets and you know, different avenues that you have that are available to you. That also cuts costs on travel. You don't have to use the per diem for your meal allowances and hotel stays and airplane tickets. And you can sit at your office and office out of your home. And so, um, our church the same way. I just believe that our church will not go back to the way it once was. Uh, we will do a lot more things utilizing platforms through technology. And, um, we will perhaps have some people, your, your people are joining your churches and watching you on Sundays as you stream. And then go on to three different churches, I may add. They're, they're, they're jumping in on this service and jumping in on another service and you know.
All them churches, you ain't brushing teeth yet, it's 12-year-old, get up, brush your teeth.
They don't necessarily have to get out of their beds anymore. And some people have gotten comfortable and complacent with that and will not physically return to a building, brother Steve.
That's true.
And so that's where that creativity comes along. You cannot lose, we cannot lose ministry because our world is changing. So we have to use the creativity and we have to be able to do it well. You, you have to be the, have a, a, a differentiating factor in your ministry to draw people, to connect with them online because they're not walking into your building physically and draw them in where they'll tune in and support your ministry, watching you live through a virtual service. And so being creative even in our church, it is necessary. And therefore, that is another reason why the, the being innovative, fresh ideas. You know, you use young MBAs coming out of college because they've learned something new and we need to implement it into what we have going on currently. You got current state and you got future state and you have to mesh those together.
You know, I'm gonna bring in, um, uh, Brother Bill in about, uh, another two minutes before you give your closing comments. Um, let's address this issue real quick. Let's get the people to say some words to people are, they're still, uh, give you comments and giving you hellos right there. Oh, oh, somebody just gave us a nice long, okay. Uh, Raven Martin out there saying hello to you. Uh, there's just wonderful comments, balancing legacy with the future is so important, amen. Proven leadership, amen. Fluker's the change we need and Sister Sheila and that could, that's Ohio North out there watching us right now. And someone just wrote us a whole dissertation out there. So she helps millennials and does so many wonderful great things. First lady sees the best and people pushing them to go forth to be qualified. Amen, you know, the people are just, um, are just, are just loving you right now. We started first, we stated first lady, amen. We, we love that team, Fluker. Let me ask you this question real quick. Someone who's having some hard times financially, struggling through this whole COVID situation and ties may be tough and rough, but they wanna start budgeting their money and doing the best they can. They have $100. What idea, what advice could you give somebody who barely have a bank account? They ain't have a bank account, they go to the check cashing center. You have $100 and if you don't have $100, you pick up your cell phone and you text 10 people and say, loan me $10 for one year. You got your $100. What idea or suggestion can you give to them to do with that $100?
Well, uh, I will certainly take that $100 to that person in that example. We've known people to start with little and, and it becomes much. Uh, John H. Johnson started his business, I wanna say he had under $10,000. Um, you know, uh, Master P, he, he had very little money, but he went to his grandparents and people sold into his vision. And so I would say to that person with $100, that's not a lot of money, but it's certainly, uh, uh, worth you not wasting that $100. You take that $100, you do, you reach out to somebody that believe in your vision. You have a plan, you have to have a plan and, and get an investor to invest in you. And whatever that business is that's being birthed out of you, you take that $100 and you make that $100 work for you to make more money. But you're gonna need somebody else to believe in your vision. They gotta believe in your plan. And I believe if you have a sincere plan and you go to somebody that, uh, uh, that's willing to help you. You know, we had this during this COVID, plenty of people started doing the gifting program. And they were investing as little as $100. And that $100 was to turn around and make them $1,500. And so, um, I didn't, I don't suggest that type of pyramid type of thing that many people are getting involved in. But the point is, there's someone that believes in your vision and you use that $100 to grow your vision. And eventually, you'll be able to seek and begin to reap from even what you've put in. Because even when you go to a bank, they wanna know how much money you have.
Yeah.
Us to give you a loan. So to secure a loan, you have to put up what you have. You don't get to go empty-handed, you have to go with something in your hand. So I would say our whole philosophy in church, you know, we sow and, and you've never seen the righteous forsaken or his seed begging bread. Somebody will believe in your vision, you sow that $100. Sell that vision to them, they invest in you and you make it work for you.
Well, we're gonna bring in Brother Bill once again and, uh, I mean, what more can be said? We want you, but this is what we're asking right now. And we see the people watching right now and I'm gonna need you, Brother Bill, to help me. Can I just get 10 people to share this with a group? Can I just get 10 people that's watching right now, just share it with one of your groups? You know you in a group that has 5,000 people, but don't put it in the coaching decision group because we already got that group on. But can you just get people to share? And before we ask Lady Fluker for her closing comments, Brother Bill, what do you wanna say to our? brother Bill what do you want to say to our delegates out there watching before lady fluker for her closing comments
oh man I'm so proud of lady fluker she did this thing tonight but I have one one major word I want to put into everybody's spirit and that word is vote I appreciate all the comments I appreciate all the commendations and accolades but we've got to vote February twenty third is a monumental day it is a day that the destiny and future of our church hangs in balance and we have to have the right people with the right focus and the right energy and the right Holy Ghost to make a difference in our in the life of our church and I'm telling you we need lady fluker on the trustee board she is going to bring experience and innovation I mean we have both legacy pedigree and we also have destiny all of it tied up together right here lady fluker and so I urge you to do that vote on February twenty third spread the word and even if you're not a delegate even if you're not a delegate to the general assembly I'm sure you know some delegates so please spread the word spread the word and please see our Facebook pages and you can type in the change we need as a hashtag on Facebook and you will find all of the flyers and everything that is relative to this campaign vote 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 like your life depends on it this is a consequential election and lady fluker is a consequential leader thank you
I'll give you a cast my vote for YouTube alright first lady what closing words do you want to say to the delegates and the people right now watching and those who are gonna watch the replay because for those people who are texting we're gonna text this video out to our database and when you get the video share the video and let's get more people we need more people in let's join the group that's all don't forget that you have more people to join the Kojic decision twenty twenty and they're saying well when the election is over what are we gonna do in Kojic decision twenty twenty stay in the group and you'll be glad that you did amen lady fluker what closing comments do you want to say to our people right now watch our broadcast
well I'd like to say first to my campaign manager elder LaDarius Bill great job thank you so much for believing in me and champion me I really appreciate everything that you're doing for this campaign brother Steve thank you so much for having us on Kojic decisions twenty twenty one show great show and we certainly support what you're doing Mr producer out in Hollywood California I love to hear him say that out in Hollywood but to the delegates and to everyone that's watching on tonight elder Bill already mentioned it even if you are not a delegate you know someone that's a delegate you can certainly help by sharing this video on tonight and the reason you should vote lady Lolita fluker on February twenty third I have a passion for finances I am no novice I am not running on the the strength of getting a national position I run because I am passionate about what it is that I believe in I'm running for the national trustee boards because I believe the people deserve to have someone on the board of trustees not only a trusted individual one that operates in integrity those are the least but you need someone that has the skillset to actually get the job done that is concerned about your finances you need someone that exudes the skillset and have the ability to to push back not afraid to have courageous conversations you need someone that is committed to working hard for every dollar that goes into our great church to be able to free up resources to bring to benefit the church to bring other properties into our church that we can acquire hotels into our church yes the church of God in Christ we need to have our own but it will be because we have the finances to do so you need someone that our portfolio will be so tight that obtaining loans would be no problem and getting them with the best interest rate would be no problem because our portfolio will be that tight which means we will have that money in reserve on hand in our treasure that makes us the giants among many we are the greatest church in the world we we are by large the the strongest in numbers in terms of a black Pentecostal Reformation there's absolutely no reason that our finances should not measure up to the great church that we are and in my closing I am pleading to all of you on tonight to vote Lolita fluker February twenty third to the national board of trustees for the church of God in Christ
well let me say this thank you sir very much lady Lolita fluker for your wonderful wonderful words and people are still commenting proud to be church of God in Christ this was an awesome night and thank you for those who are watching our broadcast elder Bill appreciate you die thank you for everything y'all getting live from Hollywood California brother Steve right here live with lady Lolita fluker and her candidacy for national board of trustee you make sure you make the right choice vote lady Lolita fluker and we'll be right back after this y'all stay tuned share the video and don't forget we'll see you tomorrow night we've got another great candidate we're going to Detroit we'll see you tomorrow night God bless